Okay, welcome everyone to our commission work session Weaver County Commissioners and Commissioner Sharon Bowles. I'm here with Commissioner Gage Ford, Commissioner Jim Harvey. Today is Monday, October twentieth twenty twenty five. Item one is a discussion and our action for approval of minutes for the commission work sessions, how about October twentieth?
Madam Chair, motion to approve is printed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Those minutes are approved. Item two on the agenda has been removed, so I would entertain a motion to saunter until one fifteen.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hey, we're back Commissioners, I need a motion to cease to saunter.
Motion to cease to saunter?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we're back in our meeting now for item three, which is a discussion regarding the opioid settlement policy. Lanelle Jensen, sir. Chris Crockett is coming?
I don't know. She's not here right now, so.
We have Sean Wilkinson with us too and Jessica Clark, okay, well now.
Okay, so Chris and I have been talking about a policy that, you know, just, okay, just an overview, so we have twenty applications. We've got them out to our committee. Everyone is going through and vetting them. We're hoping to meet next Monday and kind of start going through. It's gonna be a couple hour meeting, probably going through. Then we're going to score them and then we'll come and present them all to you. We're hoping to have a, like we've done a PowerPoint before, just so that kind of to summarize each thing, just like we did with ARPA. So Chris and I just looked at a policy that's been, did you want them to look at this now, do you think?
Oh yeah.
So these are just the policy we have, basically, that we're gonna go through the applications and then you guys will be the final ones to make the decision. We'll kind of give you our recommendations. We're coming up with a scoring system right now. Just to give you an overview though, so it looks like we're gonna get about twenty million dollars. That's, you know, always changing because we're getting new defendants on all the time or people that are paying, not defendants, but what do you call them? Defendants? Okay, so at this point, we have eight points, almost eight point two million that we have collected. We've been collecting for a few years. The way that's scheduled out, we will be collecting about one point two million a year for the next about till thirty-eight, so another thirteen years. And we have promised, we've given the public defenders four hundred and twenty-six thousand. And there's a forty thousand dollars that we gave to Weaver Human Services. We've approved that Weaver Human Service, that men's training building for one point one million fifty thousand. That, we don't know if they'll end up getting, you know, approval from Magin City to build or not. They were also approved for four hundred and sixty thousand for a mat employee for three years. And then the Health Department got approved for a hundred and seventy-eight thousand for twenty twenty-five. And you know, we've been in lots of meetings on that one with the Health Department. So total, everything that we've approved up to this point is two point one million, which leaves us about six million of what we've received out of the eight. We have six million. I guess the thing I'm hoping you can wrestle with is if you're thinking about giving the sheriff many for the medical wing, I think ten million's been thrown around. I don't know if you guys are really thinking that. I hear this from the sheriff. I don't know.
Ten million is the first amount that we talked about, about them, Scott.
That's kind of been the consistent number.
Okay.
Not that we've had any firm, you know, method, okay, how do we do it? But yeah.
So that would take.
In theory, that's where we are. It's not the exact number, but there you go.
Okay, so how do you want that budgeted to give to him? I mean, we have, like I say, we have six million so far that we've received that we haven't approved for anybody. We could say, okay, that's gonna be earmarked what we've received. The six million can be earmarked for the sheriff and then moving forward so much a year. I don't know what you're thinking, if you're thinking, because that's half of it. We only get one point two a year. How do you want us to go about these grants? Do you want us to think about approving projects for the one point two a year? Or do you know what I'm saying?
Or do we, or do we count that as already spent? Is that what you're asking?
Mm-hmm, like I don't. I'm just trying to get in my mind what we've got, what money we're thinking about. So out of twenty, if you give ten to the sheriff, you've already given two to other things, then that leaves eight for the grants from here on out. Eight, eight million for anything else.
Unless anyone else joins.
Yeah, 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 and it might go up, that can go up, but right now it's about eight million that we would have to allocate in grants over the next thirteen years, not just in this year.
Right.
Yeah. There you go.
Yeah, so maybe you don't have to make the decision. I just want you to kind of have that in your head as to what the budget is looking like for this.
Okay.
We're probably about eight million.
And it could be, just you do this first round of grants, just to see how it goes and then make a decision once, to see what the reporting's like. Maybe there's a, something that comes down the road that you want to fund that has bigger price tag. Um, or maybe the grants are gonna be successful, you increase the allotment, or who knows what will happen.
I think we initially talked about shifting ten million over to the, the operations in the Sheriff's Office to free up funds for that medical and mental health wing. We talked about borrowing it.
Us, oh, borrowing it from the county?
From the county.
That we would transfer and then we'd take funds from that to pay it back over time?
Yes.
Years or something.
Whether we paid it back with opioid or paid it back through.
I think we'd pay it back with.
That's what I recall now.
That's, that's how I see it.
And then, like, over ten years. I can't remember that conversation. I think it was ten years.
So like a million a year going back?
But I don't see that that means that we want to necessarily give away the remaining seventy million, right? I mean, just, I think, I like business suggestion. See how this first round goes and.
Okay.
And what kind of.
Didn't we earmark, was it five hundred thousand for this first round?
Well, that's kind of what the initial approval was, was five hundred thousand to go into the grant program per year, so five hundred thousand for this year. So is that kind of where you want us to stay focused? Or just present them all to you and you decide what you want? Some of my opened one that was like a nine hundred thousand dollar request, but I mean, over time, I don't think it was just for this year.
Yeah, I think I'd like to look at it. I don't know Commissioners, what your thoughts are, but I'd like to look at it and we might find a natural break, you know, where these projects seem like they would be, you know, good recipients and these ones maybe not, and just see where that break is and consider it then. But for the bigger ones that are, that are multiple years, like nine hundred thousand for multiple years, I think we'll have to make a decision on, um, and, and they'll, the applicant will have to help us understand, if you get it for one or two years and then we don't have the money, is the, what does that program look like? I think that needs to be part of the conversation as well.
Right.
Yeah, and I, and I think that whether we do five hundred thousand, I think Sharon's right, we just take a look at wherever, you know, we're gonna have some rise to the top, just like we do with our brothers, that, okay, but I don't think we, in my opinion, we don't spend more than probably that first year without some type of metrics coming back. Tell us what we've got. And then the big one I'm gonna push for is, okay, if it's nine hundred thousand, we, we'll give you half of that over a period of time. Tell us where you're gonna get the rest of the money. I mean, that's.
Another grant.
Tell us where you get your grants. Are you talking to the state? You know, it's, I don't think, my opinion, we shouldn't be the only provider of this. Now, maybe there's some small programs that they can stand up with our funds, but most of these programs ongoing, they're gonna require some additional funding.
Yeah.
I just, and I think we just, we can't be the sole provider, in my opinion.
Okay.
I don't remember if we asked in our, or the application if they were getting matching funds.
We did not, and I wish we would have.
Well, we can, we can always send out a request for supplemental information.
That's true.
If you're going to have any additional funding coming in.
Yeah, I, to me, matching funds, if we're using, they're using half their money and half ours?
Yeah.
Great. And that's why I keep, every time I bring it up, are you talking to the state? You know, state has some money, or partner with the state, partner with whoever, you know, select health, I don't care. But bring some additional money and somebody else has got some skin in the game.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
So what are some of the things, matching is one. Is there anything else you want us to be looking at as we're coming up with the scoring criteria? Like, are there priorities of anything you want to see? Or are you just open to whatever they're presenting? I mean.
I'm open to pretty much anything, but I would say that those, those programs that will be able to show progress within a year are gonna be higher on my list because if you're asking for a program that's, that you don't feel like will show any results for five years or more, that's hard to give money to because.
It has to be almost quantifiable in some way.
And sooner, sooner than like a five-year period, I would say within a year, show some results.
Okay.
If they feel like the, you know, if it maybe feels like the program can do that.
Yeah, I, to me, I would ask them, show us a program, either that's yours or similar program outside the state or within the state, that actually models yours that has proof. You know, how do we know this is gonna work? Everybody has a great idea and then they have the money and, you know, a year later going, well, we would've, you know, it was a great idea, but it didn't quite come through.
So we have, they had to write down three things that were measurable.
Yeah.
Outcomes.
Yeah.
In their applications, so we can score that too. So we'll be pretty open to then whatever, okay. Now, on the Health Department, and I know we talked a little bit, this year they didn't officially get approved until August. Can we go back and cover their travel? Because I've made them reapply for next year. You know, originally they applied and wanted to for three years. Well, they didn't officially get all the way approved to, excuse me, to August. But do we want them to, like, should we go back and cover their travel that's in their application for this year that they've already done? Because I do think at the time Scott Bryce told him, you know, we're not officially approved, but we've got this travel, these conferences are in April, and he said, go ahead, we can cover them. So should we cover the twenty twenty-five now that they were approved in August, even if they were prior to August expenses? And just get that hundred and seventy-eight thousand out to them? You know, they're covering personnel, they're covering travel.
A hundred and seventy-eight thousand for the last.
For the one year.
Months of the year?
Well, that's what I'm saying. Does it really cover the whole year? Are you, would you allow it to cover the whole year? And go back and cover? I mean, because we could cover their expenses that they did their travel in April and that was officially approved, but not till August.
Did they, have they done anything other than travel?
Well, they've got personnel costs.
Well.
But I'm not seeing that.
They actually done anything.
Yeah.
Quantifiable.
I get that.
Were there personnel costs, additional people? Or were they covering some of their grants? Because they shouldn't be covering grants that they lost.
You guys know as well as I.
That's a question, that's a question for me.
Yes, I mean, on their salary, they do have Bryce, they do have Mickey Road, they have Liz Jones that are all, you know, employees over there, but that's the thing that was kind of, we didn't know and they were, so they, you know, it just took a while for us to finally approve everything. Does that cover their whole year? Are we only giving them a portion of it this year? Because they've now applied for next year. They're in these applications now for next year, kind of the same application. Because the original one that they got approved for last November was for three years. And it was this hundred and seventy-eight thousand a year. So do we let them have that for this twenty twenty-five and just put it to their different expenses that they've asked for?
They would have a budget shortfall, wouldn't they, if we don't? Because it couldn't have been approved in their regular budget.
No, it wouldn't have been approved.
So they'd have, they'd be short if they went ahead and already did this, so they'd have to cover it from someplace else that they weren't anticipating.
So they got the money approved in August, but they implemented this in April. So they should be, by April, they should have results and that will be after our award cycle.
Yeah, I mean, these guys were tentatively approved last November, so they went ahead, thinking they were gonna get this.
So if they went ahead, they should be able to have results to share with us, with their new application.
That's what I'm thinking. And with that premise, I'm okay with the, the, the brief, what you've asked for.
To do it for this year.
They should have.
I think, well, because we gave it to them for, for this year, I think we should look, that we should reimburse that. But for their second year application, which is what we have in hand now, they need to show us results.
They need to show results from first year.
So are you saying just release the travel?
No.
Not the whole, one seventy-eight?
No, I think you're saying, give them the whole one seventy-eight for this year, because they technically got approved. It's just hard to get the timing on it, but we could put it in twenty-five and on the second application, we could ask them to show us what they did and what their results were.
I thought we had.
Exactly.
I thought we had requirements in that three-year contract that they had to come in and show us outcomes every year.
Which is right now.
Which will be through their application.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're the only ones that need to show us what's going on.
So we basically have to show us before they get the second year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, that's how it was.
We're okay with us.
Okay, and then, um, I'll go ahead.
I just say, I personally don't know how you're gonna show results when going to the conference, but.
Yeah.
Well, if they, well, yeah, if, if there aren't any results, then it's like we funded again.
Yeah, that's right too, like whatever you choose to do, you're gonna be under that crunch to. Kind of.
Then the other question though is, if you approve something, are you requiring them to spend it and use it all in that year? Or can they, if they don't get everything spent, can they just carry it forward? Because we can set them up as a project in the financials and say, they've been awarded two hundred thousand dollars and as they're spending it and asking for reimbursements, we'll minus it off, but it seems logical to me that they should be able to carry it a little bit forward, that same amount. If they don't get it spent, I don't want them to just hurry and spend it and not be spent on what.
Let them carry it forward. I mean, if, if, if we approve them for the next one, then I say, let them bring it forward. If we don't approve it.
Then they turn it back.
And they, and we've got to recapture.
Turn it back.
Okay.
Which, yeah, I, I don't want them rushing out and then.
Right.
All of a sudden they have five more.
No meaning.
Conferences.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay, and then.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, we can add it to their, they don't even spend it all, but we approve them for the next year. We can just increase the budget in that project for any additional. But I kind of foresee this as they do the one-time big application, like what they're doing now. And then if they're applying to do it again for next year, it's a different type of application. It's one that's showing their results and it's a lot shorter application.
Because we'll understand the program, we're just looking at results. Yeah, I agree. I think that's fair.
Okay. Okay.
Um, as far as presenting them to you, we did with CARES and ARPA where we presented after we scored them, just an idea of where things were before making any uh, actual recommendation. Do you want to see all of them and just have a summary, or do you want us to actually go through and recommend, um, and just forward those to you?
What's your pleasure?
I'd like to, I'd like, listen, I'm really sold with this process and how things worked out for ARPA and CARES. I'm comfortable in how we're going about this and as long as moving forward, it's similar to those two very, very successful programs, I'm okay.
I like the scores. I like you guys, I mean, you guys are sitting there talking to them. We're not gonna have that opportunity. I look for you, here's our, here's our ranking. I like to see a ranking, however you do it.
Yep.
And, and because you're, a lot of those interviews that we saw in ARPA and CARES Act came from, okay, are these people really know what they're talking about? They're gonna do it? Is it that we, that we're looking at the board, we don't know.
Yeah.
So in my opinion, is we let them rank it. I mean, not that we can't take one and make it a five or whatever, but.
Yeah.
Let you start the process.
Sure.
Okay, because they're long applications, they're not, you're not going to go through all of those like we are.
No.
Huh, Jessica? We're gonna go through those really nitpicky and then we're gonna try to put scores with each.
We trust you.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's a good route. All right, I need you guys. All right, Commissioners, item four is a discussion regarding Trappers Crossing Sewer Agreement. Sean Wilkinson, Chad Meyer, Eric, Eric Snow, they're all here, look at that.
Wow, have you heard from Paul? No, I sent him the lead. But he was going to get on.
He was gonna get on?
Yeah, let me see if, let me just talk to Christie real quick.
Okay, if she's here, she's, I think she's at the dentist.
Oh.
So.
Pulling.
I'm controlling the meeting.
Oh, okay, well. Is there anybody in the waiting?
I don't. I think it would have popped up left.
Maybe we'll just call him on the phone. So are you okay? So this is the the developer of Trappers Crossing who owns the remaining sewer connections up there.
Okay.
Where exactly is up there?
So Trappers Crossing, the old Trappers Loop Road.
Okay.
That's, it's that development right off of Old Trappers Loop Road. You go up that road, there are how many homes built in there right now?
We've probably got at least six or seven.
Yeah.
Now.
This is a nice subdivision. First developed back in two thousand seven, something like that.
But it didn't go anywhere for like two years.
Right.
Two thousand eleven, I think, was about when it got recorded. That's when this document got recorded, as far as the sewer agreement, but he was working with another development that was called The Rivers, which was down, as you make that turnaround, it's that area that kind of got flooded out. Um, but there was a development that came in and we were having a run together, so he.
Part of Wayne's garden's property.
I think so, so you know, the barn right across from me, that's, they've had all the sheet down in there.
A lot of sheet.
Something that could recognize, um.
Yeah.
But so the Rivers project came in and they had about forty other units they were gonna do down there, so he was working with them on sewer, water and secondary water to also service them, so he had the lines ran all the way underneath the highway, ready to survey.
I forgot about that.
Then it went kerplunk, so.
Yeah.
I think Randy Day is the name, I believe, that we were working with back.
From Moab, yep.
Yes.
Had a few conversations.
Jamie Gold.
Good old Randy.
Oh, yeah, that, yeah. Randy came in after.
Right. Yep.
Is he gonna get on or?
No, he, I, he, I got his voicemail, so we can just, we can jump into this.
Let's go.
And Chad probably knows the situation a little bit better than I do, but as he just explained, so Trappers Crossing built a sewer system. It was sized to fit all of Trappers Crossing and that Rivers subdivision that Chad mentioned, but then the rivers never developed, so there are remaining sewer connections that had a value to them and could still be sold to others in that area who could connect into this Trappers Crossing system. The request today is, is from Paul Lawton, who is the owner of those rights. And in the agreement, it said that the anticipated connection fee for each of those was seven thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars. Um, but this agreement was from
two thousand eleven.
Two thousand eleven, okay. So what Paul is, is asking is if we can increase that connection fee to the current market rate. Because he's waited so long and when the rivers went out, he's, he's trying to recoup his money and based on it having been almost fifteen years since this agreement was approved, he feels like there should be some consideration to be able to sell those sewer connections at the market rate, whatever that is in the future, when they are sold. So that, to my understanding, that's the only change to the agreement.
Correct, that's the way he, uh, stated it, in the same ways.
So how is the county part of that agreement? It's not just between him and the buyer?
Thank you.
Go ahead, Chair.
So as part of this agreement, it was put in here, um, when all these little small wonderful sewer treatment plants come in, they're required to either have a district or a body politic over them. So at the time, it was the, the county that chose to be the body politic over it or cornered into being into it, whichever way you look at it, but, um, that was put into that same agreement at the time, so that's kind of how we got stuck into.
Yeah, so we are the current body politic over that sewer system.
Will the new city take that over?
We both are to court them.
Hoping so.
That, that's our assumption.
Okay.
Um, because, I mean, we'll, we'll probably have to put something in writing at some point to memorialize that with the new city, but yeah, that's our assumption is that it's gonna take over the sewer systems up there, right? And the only, the only one that's a question would be, at least my opinion, would be the Pine US Sewer Improvement District, where it is a district.
It's a district.
Right.
It's a district.
Yep.
But all our privates should take it, should be the new cities.
Correct, that's our understanding.
Okay, that's how I look at it, but.
Okay. Their recommendation?
And this is in the. Incorporated. This would be in the incorporated there.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and just so that you're aware, this is how they came up with the, we came up with the cost back then. If you look at the bottom of paragraph eleven, it gives us the anticipated cost was on that share being upgraded. We just simply divide that by forty units to get that seventy-eight hundred dollars. Um, and so, you know, Paul's, I guess, where he's not on here, the way, the way he stated it to me says, well, if I had that money put into an investment of even a small percentage, it would have grown to a lot more over the fifteen years, and so that's why he was asking for us. I don't know necessarily if I have a recommendation one way or the other.
I, I don't think it matters to us right now.
Like it impasses us.
No, um, I understand where he's coming from. He wa, he wasn't able to sell those. And they are probably, they probably do have a different value now than they did at the time. And if, if he's, I don't know that we want to get in the way of how much those connections cost. I, I'm, I believe that to you, Chad, to, but that may just be a negotiation between him and whoever wants to buy those connections.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering.
So I, I don't know that the county really cares what that cost is, because if he wants to sell them, he's going to have to sell them at a price that someone will buy them at.
Right.
Yeah.
But, but, but it's being brought to us because we're part of the agreement.
Correct. Yep, because we are the body politic. And we, we would have the authority to amend the agreement.
Okay.
So who's in a buying?
Uh, whoever might develop in that area.
Well, what I'm saying is you don't have a lot of potential, unless it's Snow Basin.
Correct, and he, he is talking to Snow Basin.
So, yeah.
Yeah, so we, we don't know, and he asked that question too. He said, do you know of anybody around that is developing that I could sell these to? He said, we're not aware.
Because then the county ground starts, remember that road that we didn't give away, Harf? That starts just to the south of this project.
Correct.
And then it becomes Snow Basin.
Yep.
On the other, on the east, or excuse me, west side.
Yes.
Anyway, yeah, I don't think we got a dog in the fight, but.
It would have to be within close proximity to really.
Yeah.
Get served.
Let's just be clear, all we're talking about is the treatment facility. Those lines he's run under the road are history. He's not.
May, may not even be used.
Well, I don't see it, yeah. So he's not asking that though, that that cost, I just want to make sure that the cost reflected in the treatment and not the infrastructure for the sewer lines.
That's the way I believe it was back when we did it. There will be a level of upgrades that the new developer would start coming and do, so the system setup of what's called pods.
Yeah.
So each pod supplies about ten units, which it would have to have those extra, extra four pods installed, but that's about it.
Yeah. We're just gonna have to meet the market, so.
That's, that's right.
If there's a market there, I don't know.
See, so he, he just wants to be able to meet that market and not default back to the seventy-eight hundred, which was the market in two thousand eleven.
So, okay.
Sorry, can I ask what exactly the requested change is? What's he asking us to do? Because as I read paragraph eleven, there about two thirds of the way down, it says, developers shall have the right to sell or transfer such connections to other property owners who desire to connect to the sewer system. Developers shall have the sole responsibility to collect any amount charged for the sale of such connections. It isn't
stated?
Stating a cost or an amount that he can charge. He can sell them for whatever he wants, it looks like. But then it goes on to say the anticipated connection fee is this.
Yeah.
It, that doesn't bind anybody, it's anticipated, but, uh, is he asking us to change that number to say the actual anticipated connection fee is X dollars or, and that way he can point to that and say, look, this is what you're probably gonna pay in connection fees? I think that's what he was hoping for, but if this gives him the ability of doing it otherwise.
Right, I think, I think he thought he was bound by that.
Yeah.
If you're saying that he's not, then.
All you gotta do is take that last line out.
That, or we, you know, he could just ask the county, what is the connection fee right now? And you tell him it's this. We, I mean, we, we would, without this, we don't have really, we'd probably send them to him once again, right?
Right.
So this is what we thought it was anticipated, but.
Or we just say, this is what it was in two thousand eleven, but you're gonna have to go talk to him as far as what the cost is today.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know if we have.
I don't think we have anybody coming to us.
He's got the right to say.
No, that, and I think that's so if he's not bound by this, that may change the conversation. I just think he, he thought that he was bound by this. So.
Yeah, it doesn't sound like he is, so.
I mean, unless I'm totally misunderstanding something, maybe you can explain the connection fee process as far as what that number would be, who would pay it to whom? So the process there would be is if a development comes in nearby or that would choose to connect to that system, um, they would have however many units that would be going into that development. They would have to go work with Paul and work it out with him and then get a letter from him backed us that they've worked out that he can connect. And then we would allow him to connect to the system with the upgrades. And we wouldn't be collecting.
No.
Connect.
That's his responsibility.
Now, it says the anticipated connection, anticipated for me is the operative word, so.
I mean, we're not even involved in the collection of that fee.
No, doesn't come to us.
But I think that's what he wanted. He thought he was bound by that and wanted it to be a higher, no.
I don't think so.
Would it be, would you consider, I mean, if, if he came back and said, okay, I'd rather just have that out though, so it, it's not a sticking point in negotiations, would you be wi, willing to consider just eliminating that last?
Yeah, why not? I mean, I'd rather do, just. Yeah, why not? I mean, I'd rather do just eliminate the whole thing than have us get get a number in here and then he has. And this is what the county said that it's worth.
That'd be easier to transfer to the new city.
Yeah, it's not our.
And that is true.
It's not our fight.
Yeah, let's take it out.
Okay, I think that's easy. All right.
Okay.
That's it?
That's simple.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just took a little talk today.
Okay, thanks you guys.
Thanks. Yeah, I still don't understand, but.
You always fully understand.
Well. Mr. Ross.
Nietzsche.
All right, commissioners, nine five in the discussion regarding Pineview Loop North Farm Alternate Route Estuary. Sean, we have Bill Ross and Ashley Donlin.
All right. I'm anxious to see this one. Pineview Loop.
Oh, stops. Oh, you got it. Switched you. Okay, commissioners. I was contacted by Alan Wheelwright. With the Eden. Trails Foundation or Trust or whatever it is called and. He would, he had talked to me previously about this North Farm Trailhead. So if you look on here. As you approach the Y intersection there in Eden, you go up to the Old Town or you follow highway up to the four way stop. Right there, the Forest Service has a trailhead. And currently you can see that trail. It goes out through some of the wet areas. Correct.
Right here.
Yep, exactly. And then uh just continues down through. Through the Forest Service property.
That's pretty steep down in there.
It is, and and there are some crossings and some other things that that need to be addressed. That area flooded back when we had the big winter and it really has never been replaced or. There there are still a lot of improvements that need to be done, but the Forest Service just doesn't have the money to do what is being requested. If it, the thought was that that becomes part of the Pineview Loop Trail and it gets improved to a a certain standard. In lieu of of having the Forest Service doing that, the thought was that we. Let them do whatever they want with their trail, but we bring the actual Pineview Loop up to the highway. And can and continue it. So we know that's going to be expensive. There are some crossings that need to be done. A bridge would have to be built. It's going to cost some money. So what the request is.
But but the high water would never affect.
Correct, it would never be touched by the water again. So uh Mr. Wheelwright has been talking to. Civil engineering consultants. And for twenty three hundred dollars, they would prepare an engineer's rough estimate for a ten foot wide asphalt trail. With imported material, an eighty foot pedestrian bridge. And just give us the the cost estimate for what that might be. Now, knowing this will be within the city boundary, it's not something the county will address, but he would like to use impact fees to pay for that study. To get it started, and it's twenty three hundred dollars. So that's, that is the request today.
I'm good with it. Impact fees, right?
It is.
Yeah, but we're not, yeah, we're not responsible, responsible.
Committing to it.
Yeah, we're just saying, design it, new city, you'll come up with the money or.
Correct, yeah, and this this really just gives them.
Yeah.
A very basic design with a a cost estimate.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. I'm here.
You say? Okay.
All right. Okay, thank you very much.
Sure, thank you guys. Well, we're a little ahead again.
Wow, look at that. Oh, now we got your friend Steve Handy coming in.
Thanks, Bill.
We'll pause and see if they're. All right, we're back with our sixth agenda item, a discussion regarding Ogden Pioneer Days twenty twenty five report. Steve Handy, Brett B. and Rick Davis.
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're probably wondering, what are we doing here from Ogden Pioneer Days? We have uh, we have developed over the last little bit uh an annual report that we're going to go over with you. But we presented this to the and with our, we have a uh an economic impact study. And we presented this to Ogden City Council last week and they said, you need to go over to the commission and talk to them. So I sent Gage a text and he says, yeah. Here's Stacy and kind of kind of come in and come in and say hello to us.
Yes.
But uh, you know, um, some of us are, you know, born and raised in Weaver County and, you know, and we know Ogden Pioneer Days for a lot of years. And uh uh you wouldn't have Pioneer Days, Ogden Pioneer Days without Weaver County. I just don't believe that you would. And but Rick, you want to ex- express some thank yous to the commissioner.
Well, you know, I've worked pretty closely with Duncan. For the last couple of years and he's been phenomenal to help us house the timed event cattle and work with us, but. You know, we did that new event this year, the Bulls Bronx and Bands and added another night. We're trying to get the ground ready. And we had a sponsor, a tractor company that brought us a tractor, branded tractor. We're about ready to. Get the dirt worked and the flash to cold, we had to stop. So I made a call to Duncan. Monte Store Dog in the City made a call to one of his resources and they had a tractor on the road within thirty minutes. And helped us, they helped us throughout the week.
Thank you very much, yeah.
Duncan's been phenomenal to work with and, you know, I just think. I mean, not to add to what Steve's got, but I think that there's some partnerships and opportunities to tie what we do here. Together with some things at the fairgrounds during that week, because I know we have a lot of contestants that come in. And they use this area as a hub because you've got Cheyenne, Spanish Fork. And Salt Lake and none of those places have good parking. So there could be some possibilities at the fairgrounds to use that as a hub. For a lot of these contestants that are in the month of July, they could make, they could add to that economic impact.
So thank you for that. And they also boarding boarding some stock out at the fairground.
Yeah, yeah, we kept all our time to make cattle out there.
Thank you.
That that new area way out back that they've added that made it so simple for us and. So we appreciate that.
But we want to have to understand how we're structured, you know, in the inland late uh nineteen nineties when when the, when when Matt was the uh uh. Mayor. He decided that, you know, the city after since nineteen thirty four, they just couldn't do it anymore the way they it needed to be done. And so they set up a foundation. And kind of privatized. And so it's been twenty five years of this and there've been fits and starts and difficulties and. When I worked in Ogden thirty plus years ago, I was involved. I worked for the Standard Examiner. These guys know that, you didn't probably know that commissioner, but. Was the director of marketing and so was heavily involved in the community and was in on Ogden Pioneer Days and. And then way after that, the privatizations happened. So the way that we're structured today is that we have a foundation. We have a foundation, so it's a five oh one C three foundation, and then we're structured with the the chair. And I have the privilege and opportunity to follow Alan Hall in this in this uh position, but then we have these vice chairs. So Brett Guy. His company is Fourth Gear and he is the uh the vice chair of marketing and advertising, promotion, digital media. And uh and then you know Rick, Rick is the vice chair of uh of rodeo operations. Uh and then Craig Smith from Smith and Edwards was maybe going to join us and Craig is our finance director. And then Gina Black that probably all of you know does special events. And then Shannon Noble, who is the development vice president, she's vice president, development director of athletics at Weaver State now, just had a promotion. She does the sponsorships. And then um uh Pat Condon, uh retired U S Air Force general. Has been on the committee about fifteen years. He does military and and community events and Pat's going to step down. General Condon's going to step down after this year. We have uh uh retired General Max Stitzer, who's a Weber County boy. And is going to step into that role because that military night where you have that access to get those F thirty fives coming over is a. Huge, huge deal. But uh, you know, Ogden Pioneer Days, uh and I want Rick to give a perspective on this. It's it's not my father's or grandfather's or yours, Gage, you know, it's not our, it's not Pioneer Days. Pioneer Days is a really become a, Ogden Pioneer Days is a really big deal. And we stand on the shoulders of of hundreds of volunteers to get it to what it is today, but you can see. You know, the the little annual report that we've given you, I mean, by the numbers, you know, about forty eight thousand attendance. Brett tracks this very, very well, but revenues, the total sponsor revenues, actually, this was done at the end of uh um. Uh August, and we had some updates. It's actually a hundred thousand dollars over that. Hundred thousand dollars over the tech, over the, over the, 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 the sponsor revenues. And uh, you know, we have it, we don't need to make money, we just can't lose money. And and these can't lose money. And but, you know, a thousand cowboys and cowgirls coming in from all over and uh. And international company uh countries, you can see the payouts per event. We uh we we. The PRCA lists us about six hundred thirteen thousand dollars. And that, Rick, help us understand, help the commissioners understand why that's important, why why we think that's important.
Well, the payout just draws more contestants, a more. Upper level, however, top tier contestants. Uh we had contestants this year from twenty seven states. Brazil, Mexico, Canada, and Australia. And, you know, nationwide, the PRCA sanctions just over eight hundred events, seven hundred twenty three full on rodeos. Of those hundred and twen- seven hundred twenty three, our payout ranks thirteenth in the nation. We're in the same pool as Pendleton, Cheyenne. San Antonio, the big rodeos, we're drawing those same contestants and we're paying out similar money. I mean, we're a little less. But the other thing is this year, over the last five years, we've increased our exposure on. On TV, this year we did a hundred and fifteen thousand dollar um contract with the Cowboy Channel. And they just write us a check so they can put it on there and and that's. There's a lot of people in the county that watch the Cowboy Channel. So it's it's a good draw for for all, yes.
And Commissioner Faur, we've been able to do some things with Speaker Schultz, who's on our foundation. Uh to get a few little legislative dollars flowing to us. And that's a really important thing.
Yeah, well, you you know where the corners are.
We know where the corners are, but but but, you know, our our, and we had had the, it was the seventy fifth anniversary this year uh of Miss Rodeo Utah. So we have that franchise franchise and you know that Weaver County native Olivia Faverro is Miss Rodeo Utah, the big Faverro clan. And she's got a great shot to do very well at the pageant in Las Vegas in December and she's a terrific young lady, the. Great, great family that she comes from. And Brett has, Brett Guy has really grown Ogden Pioneer Days. You know, we live in a digital world. And tell us how you've grown, you know, they probably say, I mean, we've given you some just some stats there about. Website and social media, but Brett has done an amazing job in growing this.
Yeah, we just wanted the uh periphery of the of the rodeo to to look as good and to be as good as. Rick and his team and everybody else does at producing the rodeo. And we're still getting there and we're still learning, but uh. Um, the uh revenues, the ticket revenues of the organization have, I think, tripled over the last five years. Which has been really awesome and that has come at uh without really raising the price as much at all. Um, and our social media channels went from a couple thousand to thirty and forty thousand followers. And uh we're um, as um Steve mentioned, very active online. Uh during the month of July. We get uh eighty to ninety thousand hits on our website. Um, so with what everything Rick is saying, we've been trying to make sure that all aspects of the rodeo. Are aligned with what you would find anywhere else. And it's still a work in progress. It's still something we're working at. But for the for the first time and. You know, year over year, we're, we really have now some, some really good revenues that come in that allow us to make improvements to to do things that we need to do to the. To the arena and to allow, again, the folks that run the uh rodeo have more resources to do that, to attract. Uh more of the high level athletes and personnel. Um so in every way, we're just trying to make the rodeo absolutely world class. And we're still got a little ways to go, but we're getting there.
Really is. You know, the standard did this, uh, does their little reader's choice, so a a survey, you know, and. Don't know how many people participate in it, but, you know, best city celebration, best rodeo, of course. Best parade, you're always in the parade, the commissioners are always in the parade.
That's due harder because he likes to weigh with the people.
Cause he likes to, that people are riding.
It's gotta be good because I.
Yeah, and you know, we have, you know. Nice event concessions that uh that we did well, but but the committee has wanted to figure out for a lot of years, what's. What's the economic impact of Ogden Pioneer Days? So we partnered up with Dr. Gavin Roberts at Weaver State, the economic uh outcome. Economic Department Chair, and we created a survey that what we did was we had some posters at the uh. At the rodeo and there was a QR code and we incentivized them with tickets for next year and we got about seventy five responses and. Then we had a separate, separate survey for contestants and we got about thirty five. And then what Brett did, we have about four thousand in our uh our email database, something like that. So we sent that to that the database. And so then provided those results to Weaver State and then they ran it through economic formulas. And came up with this really neat report. On the the back, the the this page here, they say. That Ogden Pioneer Days has a four point seven million dollar economic impact. That's really, really great, but you can see here too, I mean, you know, you can see here too, uh. Most of the attendees come from Weaver County.
Yeah.
And Weaver County and uh, you know, uh, I think I'll tell both of you, Gage knows this and Jody Jim knows this, Commissioner, uh that. Uh Brett and I actually live in, live in Lake. And we would like to uh.
Move to Weber?
No, well, I maybe, maybe that, you know, I, you know, you know, my family's trying to sell our property in Liberty Cage. Maybe we'll have to, but if we can't sell it, we'll have to move up there. But uh, but uh, we need to grow out of North Davis and 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 South Boxolder. We we do. We need to grow our attendance, but you can see, uh, you know, uh. How do you, how do you learn it? I mean, word of mouth is the, is the number one thing because we have this incredible tradition going for us. What we do with our promotional efforts certainly adds to that in a great way. Uh, you know, before there's a question about affordability of tickets and people will always say, you know, they're too expensive. No, uh. You know, forty six percent, very, very affordable. And we want families to to be there, you know, we expanded the stadium, uh raised four million dollars uh through some efforts. Gage, I was able to get a little money in the, from the legislature, Alan Hall and the committee before that, got a nice chunk of change from the Ebbles. We're so thankful that Spence is an Ogden boy and his kids have grown up coming to Ogden Pioneer Days and he's ninety one years old, but wow. It is, it is really something that, the way they have taken care of us and helped us. In fact, he said to me, Spencer Junior said to me, he said, Stevie says. You guys need to really tap into, there's other Ogden area foundations, family foundations, and we're working to. Tap into those other foundations. Some of them have already given us money, but we're gonna, we're gonna work that, because we'd like to. We'd like to really set up an endowment that we can get financially structured, that we can be, that we can be giving, giving back. Anyway. You can, you can jump in at any point.
The economic impact, you know, we're Ogden Pioneer.
Ogden Pioneer Days.
I think about.
Yeah.
Contestants filling up with fuel and.
They're not doing just an Ogden.
They're not doing, they're doing it out by the freeway, because that's where you can get in with a truck and trailer and, you know, when I. I rodeo last year with my son along for a couple of weeks and we pulled a big rig in and built a hundred gallon gas tank and. They're 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 spending seven, eight hundred dollars. That adds up when you've got a thousand contestants really quick. And and making a difference in the community. So it's not. I would dare say it's more Weaver County than Ogden's impacted financially.
Yeah, one of the other things, just to bring up briefly too, is we have just a fabulous uh relationship with uh Weaver School District and Ogden School District as well. Especially uh Weaver is very active. Um, we do. And we're actually currently looking for another sponsor, but we have some good sponsorship dollars to allow us to provide a better uh ticket price for them. And we get great participation there and have a great relationship. We have uh an education appreciation night and really get some good participation. We also have a really good, uh, very important relationship ongoing with McCady Hospital. They've been really good to us and help us out with all of our medical and. So just a lot of parts and pieces that come out of the county that are really important to the rodeo.
And this, and this, and the sponsorship sales are. People are standing in line to sponsor Ogden Pioneer Days, even though it's a short timeframe, they just love it. They just love it. And you've all been multiple times and we appreciate that very much. The final thing that we'll say and then we'll tip our cowboy hats and get out of here. You have waiting matters to. To take today. And that is that, you know, we added an event, it was, it was. An idea that Rick brought forward and worked on it for. An, an idea that Rick brought forward and worked on it for a couple of years and called it Bulls Bronx and Bands, and it was on the Friday, cause you know, it's the week of July twenty-fourth. Go down here at the other side of Union Grill, you see that big gray mural all the time. And so, uh, we, we would officially started on Saturday night, skipping Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday was twenty twenty-five. And so we went on that Friday night with this special event, Bulls Bronx and Bands, and we stretched and brought in a, uh, you know, Chancy Williams. And, uh, we lost money, but it was not as devastating as it could have been. And, uh, we're gonna do it again this year, cause in, in the way, and you have a, you have a, a calendar here, twenty twenty-six and then commissioners. But the way it shapes up on the other side, Gage, on the, it, way it shapes up is that we would start with our Bulls Bronx and Band on Saturday night. Skipping Sunday and then go Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday for the five traditional rodeo performances. So we're right now, we're looking for a, uh, we're looking for a concert.
Trying to get the right artist.
Trying to get the right artist with a draw.
Mr. Harvey?
That's Harvey's.
Come on, come on.
Family polos is what you want. They're great. Oh, they're, they're fantastic musicians, entertainers, singers.
Do you have any questions for us? We appreciate the few minutes that you gave us. We thought this would be fun for you to just to see some of this. And, and give an appreciation to you for the extra special help always.
You know.
Anything to add, Rick?
Yeah, I just had a thought and Brett, I'm just kinda shooting for him, but there's some opportunities that I've seen that. Cheyenne, the state of Wyoming, um, they've done some media on the Cowboy Channel. And it might be good for us all to get together and, because it's relatively inexpensive. And if we could promote Weaver County, Ogden City, Ogden Pioneer Days on the Cowboy Channel for, it might be an opportunity for all of us, so. I'll push it to you, Brett, but I think if you guys are open to that, it would be, there are a lot of people in Weaver County that watch the Cowboy Channel.
That's a good opportunity to introduce Jessica who walked in, uh, from another meeting, she's our PR manager. So she usually sits in our work sessions and you came at the right time, yeah, that's, I, I think that's great.
Of course, that contact to me, Brett, and I, I just think it would be great for all of us.
I do, and I think any way that we can just continue to strengthen the relationship and, um, you know, ways that we can help you and anything that. That you can clearly do to help us, um. We, we've just decided as a, the committee, it's an amazing committee, it's really, uh, it's, um, it's a great thing and. Just takes a lot of time, effort, and energy, but, you know, I was just, I think a couple of years ago, even two or three years ago, that really. You know, we, we, it's just such an important thing, um, that, uh, we make sure that, uh. In everything that we do, Weaver County is properly represented and, uh, as well as Ogden City, but. The rodeo is just to the point now where it's, it really is, you know, has a, a good economic footprint. Um, and, uh, reaches a lot of hearts and minds and, and has a great reputation, and we'd like to, to carry. We just see it as a great way of just lift, lifting all ships as much as possible and. Um, so we just really wanted to make sure that you were how, how important you are to us and. How, how much of a difference we also feel like we're making, so anything that we can do going forward, we'd love to do.
Say anything that we can help, right?
There'd been too many years, I don't know why, but there was a animosity and contention, but. I don't know where it came from, but, oh, well. But we don't feel that and we appreciate.
Person, personalities, and we all know about personalities.
With the Ogden City you're talking about.
Personality.
Ogden City, yeah. We were never. It does not exist anymore. We were never, when I say we, the county was never very looked on and very good gracious when I came, it was their, it was their party, stay out of it. You guys do the fair, we'll do the rodeo, and I think we gotta look past that. So talking about.
Yes.
Talking about Northern Utah economics.
Right, right.
Economic development. You've been on that committee.
I've been on that.
And you, hey.
Yes.
We've got a budget set aside that I think would probably fit in to do outreach. And again, it's Northern Utah, we're actually reaching out now to both Box Elder, Morgan, and Cash. But I think Chris probably could round up, even though I just, we just cut his budget, he might have a little money in there.
Yeah.
To me, that's.
Know how to do that?
Yeah.
That's, yeah.
So we've actually got a meeting Thursday, if you're interested. You used, you're not on that committee anymore.
No, no, I, when I came out of office, I was.
Yeah, but you used to be.
Done, but I was, but I know that, I know how it works and, you know, Bob's on there and.
Yeah.
All that, all that, you know, of course.
Yeah, we won't forget about our people in Davis County.
No, yeah. But, you know, all they have, our, my contact information is there, if you think of anything, commissioners, that.
This Thursday?
Well, did you say it's this Thursday?
This Thursday, downstairs.
Well, have somebody send that, send the details, the details about it and see what we can do.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can probably give you, um. I haven't seen the agenda, we've got a couple, we got the mayor talking about airports, but we could give you five minutes.
We could take, I could take, we could take five minutes and, you know, we could take five minutes.
All right, we'll get you an invite.
Bring him this, you know, yeah.
We'll get you an invite, I'll make sure we get you.
Thank you, yeah, thank you.
That's where it goes.
Thank you.
We fund those things for those, that purpose.
That purpose, right.
Yeah.
Right.
But this is just another, you know, you've got a lot of, as you well know, a lot of good players in that room.
Right.
Uh, from business to education.
Right.
Doesn't hurt to get your word out.
Yeah, get the information to us, I can.
Okay, no, we're, we're very, very proud to be.
Yeah.
In, in Weaver, in Ogden, and, um, we just wanna make sure that we're making sure that's understood.
Yeah.
Anything else?
That's good to hear.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, yeah.
What, what do you see yourselves in ten years?
Commissioner, we are in the, the process of, um, uh, crafting a strategic plan to look exactly at that in a formal way. But, you know, just initially, and, and you, you two chime in here real quickly, just initially, we have to stay financially stable. That's the number, number one thing, you can't have that, we have, we have money in the bank, we're financially sound, we're in great shape, but you never know what happens. When COVID came along. You did, you know, what, what happened in COVID, Rick?
We didn't get to do it.
Didn't, didn't?
Yeah, we turned the year off.
That turned hopeful.
We made it.
Full year off, but got, got through it, but, but anyway, um. Ogden Pioneer Days, uh, uh, and I've gone one time to the P R C convention in, in Las Vegas, these guys have gone a few times. But people love Ogden Pioneer Days, they love that setting. They love the Ogden River coming down like that to water their horses and get some shade and take care of things. And, and Gina Black and others have led this effort and initiative to take care of the contestants. And it's widely well-known that we take care of the contestants. So we, we, we know where we are, we have a, we have a base, Commissioner, and so we're just gonna expand and grow that base. Uh, it's really important to maintain, uh, our, our, uh, standing in our payouts because that ranks the rodeos. And of course, we have so much going for us that you have a big Ogden rodeo, you have a big Days of Forty-seven, you have a big Spanish Fork going at the same time. And so the contestants love this because they don't have to drive to California to ride rodeo. Or Montana, they can do this within this hundred-plus mile corridor. So the three rodeos, talking about Ogden City and Weaver County. Wait, back in my earlier days on this, there was, you know, jealousies.
Yeah.
No, they have their market, we're not going to draw people out of Salt Lake, and we don't need to. We don't need to, there's a huge Weaver County, North Davis, South Box Elder, Morgan, that we can draw from and continue to draw from and pack that stadium every night. So those are some of the things we're thinking about.
Yeah, well, and, uh, just to capitalize on that, we've actually been working very hard and Rick's actually spearheading this. Strength, to strengthen the relationship along the Wasatch for other rodeos, Oakley, Fremonton.
Right.
We want everybody to benefit because when I go, and you may correct me, but when I, when we go to P R C A convention and they put the, the circuit final, the circuit rodeos up there. Utah's second only to Texas, a number of rodeos in there, and people don't get that. And see, one thing that Rick and I have talked about. Um, and I'm working on is just, uh, uh, an entire, uh, online presence of rodeo in Utah in general. But, and you get Rick and I in a room and close a door and there's no telling what we're gonna come up with, but I know what your vision is, and I know what my vision is, and that is. There's, sky's the limit as far as we're concerned, I mean, we just can't see. We can't see anything that we can accomplish, right, Rick? I mean, we just feel like this rodeo has the legs to really become. Uh, among the, the, the upper echelon, and we already, we're, we're cresting that. But we look at Reno and some other rodeos like that, that, and we're learning from that, and we're just kinda getting started. The next five years, I think this first five years has been kinda cementing that foundation, but the next five years, and answer your question, sky's the limit as far as we're concerned. Um, and what the impacts that we feel like we can make in the, in the lives of youth. Rick has started up a youth camp there, um, and the, the principles and values of rodeo and what it means. And trying to move that more fully into, into the minds of youth and how we can help the youth find a base and find a footprint and. And, um, you know, do something along those lines too, so I know you've got, you know, we've talked a lot about things, but we got a lot of vision.
I, sometimes these guys rightfully so are saying, whoa, Rick, whoa. My vision of what this can be is huge, and I really believe that in the next ten years. One of my goals is to outpace Salt Lake, which we're pretty darn close, we're outpaying Spanish Fork now. Um. I call the Yellowstone Effect, it's cool to be cowboy now. And if we can take advantage of that in this short term. Um, uh, you, two years ago at the P R C A convention, Cody Johnson, the singer, spoke to us. And he says, we as cowboys sometime get this attitude that, oh, whoa, he's got funny boots on and. Where did he get that hat? And we push him away. We need to embrace those people. And realize that it's adding an economic impact to our industry. And I think there's a lot of people in Weaver County, in the schools. The cowboy is cool, how can we involve them in what we do? And make, not just an economic impact, but we can impact lives. Because that's, we, Brett said, we, we started a deal with the Boys and Girls Club. We bring a hundred and twenty kids in, have P R C A contestants, show them how to ride, and then we give them a ticket to the night, the rodeo that night. I'm telling you, of all the things that we do that week, that touches my heart the most to see these hundred and twenty kids. Touch something that they never have before.
That opportunity.
And I don't think that just goes to check kids with challenges, I think there's people in the community that don't get a chance to get a hold of their Western way of life. And, and we've got an opportunity for them to do that.
And you know, you know that we're a long, long, long way away from those days when I grew up in, in Ogden, when you had twenty junior posse's, Gage.
Oh, yeah.
And, and because, you know, but.
You're, you're trying to age me now.
We don't have.
It's working.
We don't, it's working, we don't have the rural.
No.
Component to the county anymore.
We don't.
And people, people come to the Ogden Pioneer, they don't know who steps and ride is, they just wanna see some cowboy get kicked in the head by a bull. And just have a, have an overpriced hammer, you know, and drink all the beer they can drink.
Everybody loves Western.
But I love Western, and the stadium isn't such a funky old place of Ogden, if you were building that today, you would never put it there. But it's so historic, you know, and, and has so much going for it, and the parking is funky. But we've figured out this thing with the, with the church here, that, that north of the temple, that, that shuttle, it takes you three minutes to get in there. You don't have to hassle parking on the grass and on the streets and, and things like that, so.
Well, if you're, when you're at the rodeo, um, just go to the south stand and take a look at what we've got there. Every walk of life you can possibly imagine.
Yeah.
And it throws me to death. You gotta leave the north side, you gotta go to the south side, that's the heart and soul of the rodeos on the south side.
Yeah.
And I'm telling you, everything you're seeing, I mean, everything you could possibly imagine, every walk of life, and it just throws me to death to see it. And, uh, we're gonna, it's gonna continue, and our social media following is way beyond just what you would consider be typical rodeo folk, so. We're really looking to make, uh, a very comprehensive difference in, in a very big way, and, you know, we, we make strides and we get knocked down and we just keep going. But, uh, as you can see, we've got some plans, so.
Thank you.
That's a great update.
Thanks for the time.
Thanks very much.
Some time with the re- what's there.
We, uh, we're done with our meeting, so. Is there some motion to a jury?
Second.
Hi. I.
Well, we were at the end of. We didn't know how long it had taken, but he gives you the rest of the day. No, you gave us.